We will call to order this, is this regular meeting of the Superior Planning Commission?
Yes.
April 3rd, 2012. Do you want to call the order please?
Derek, Chairperson John Craig-Craft.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Craig Prestesager. Commissioners Joanne Eaton here. Ian Elberson.
Here.
Ben Folsom.
Here.
Bob McColl.
Here.
Michelle Ripmester. Tom Ricker.
Present.
Hunter Freybox.
Here.
No place for Alex. All right, good. Well, this is, this is item two on the agenda. Item three, public comment on consent agenda and non-agenda items. And this would be a chance for the public to address the commission. If there were any public here to address, I think we could safely say at the moment that there will be no comment on agenda or non-agenda items. Moving on to item four, the consent agenda in the minutes of February 7th, 2012, and the minutes of February 21st. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I assume.
Any changes?
Well.
Any comments?
I wasn't here at one of them, so I can't, I can vote on one, but none of the others, so.
Okay. We can do them individually, right? Consent agenda items?
Yeah, I'm the same way, sir. I wasn't here for the 7th.
Okay, so we're gonna make a motion to approve.
Okay, I assume.
Well, we're not, well, okay.
On the first one. February 6th.
So, is that okay, just to do them individually?
Yeah.
Not a big deal.
On February 6th.
Okay, so we'll talk about the February 7th meeting. So, motion to approve the minutes by Commissioner Eaton. Second by Commissioner Ricker.
Okay.
Were there any, that's a motion to approve the minutes, does anyone have any comments? No. Okay. And then, anyone who wasn't present can't vote at the official minutes?
If they choose not to vote because they weren't here, they can abstain from the vote on that.
Okay.
That's perfectly fine.
Do you know the attendance on that date?
7:00. Yes.
Yeah.
Everyone except Commissioner Elberson.
You're right. Yeah. Okay. All right. So, all in favor of approving the minutes, please raise your hand. All opposed. Seeing none, and one abstention. Commissioner Elberson, so. And then the approval, do we want to make the same motion? Commissioner Eaton on the February 21st minutes?
Uh, I don't approve.
And second, Commissioner Ricker?
Yep.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Want to discuss?
And those that were asked, it were Prestesager, McColl, and Ripmester.
Okay. So, all in favor? Opposed? Any state? Okay. Commissioner McColl, so. Okay, so that concludes item four, the consent agenda. Item five on the minutes, or the agenda tonight is discussion and consideration of the US 36 interchange improvement options. Does staff have a presentation?
Yes. I have a presentation. I'll just introduce the presentation of that.
Okay.
Part of the Navy Code, the Navy Mission has the job of reviewing major public improvements. And this is the US 36 McCaslin Boulevard interchange, this is a major public improvement that has been under discussion with the Town Board and our C.D.O.T. and Louisville, actually. And so, our, the Towns Superintendent of Public Works, Alex Aronello, is here to make a presentation about the options for improvements to the interchange. And I think as a result of the discussion here tonight, I think we'd like to have some sort of a consensus, or say suggestions, whatever that we can come up with that you think is appropriate for Alex to utilize as they continue to go forward with the planning of this project. So, Alex.
Again, that's, pardon me.
Yeah.
That's our role in this, will be commenting on the public improvement project.
Yes, commenting on, basically, I think, the options that they have.
Okay.
Possibly, maybe coming to a conclusion from your perspective.
Okay. Again, my name is Alex Aronello, I'm Public Works Superintendent. We have some solutions. I'm gonna run through a history of the McCaslin interchange, show you some shots from the past. If you remember this, the turnpike was built in 1952, and I don't know how many recall this, but this was the original configuration of the interchange with the Marshall, with Dillon Road connecting to Marshall. And you see the two-loop concept, if you can see on that, two-loop concept was back there. But this was only limited movements, so you could get on the turnpike and you could get off, but you couldn't really go to Olman without any of those movements, so. It's kind of a limited, and McCaslin was not built at that time, so it was really focusing in on the east-west movements between Marshall and Dillon. So then, in the 60s, McCaslin was extended, and this was made a full movement, so now you could get on, you had ramps in either direction. But it wasn't a straight-through here, it was kind of convoluted, again, still focusing on the east-west movements. Then in around 1980, when the Centennial Valley area was developed, they came in and they actually paid for the upgrade of the turnpike to, I'm gonna have to need another one here. You got another pointer? So, this is an interesting photo, because you can see the tight diamond ramps that we used to have. Marshall Road was still in place, and here's the real line Marshall under construction at this point. And this Superior Marketplace was reconstructions, Superior Liquor is not there yet, Ice Arena is not there. So, this was a tight diamond, and if you remember there, it had limited storage for the left turns, it was only store three, four cars in each direction. So, as the marketplace filled out, this became a real bottleneck, and the left-turn vehicles were spilling back and blocking the interchange ramps. We came in one night, back in early 2001, 2002, and re-stride, took out, there used to be a median on the bridge, we took the median out, so we could get an additional lane, so we could have, I think it was side-by-side left-turn lanes. And then, in 2005, starting in 2003, designing the project, we added the southwest loop. Marshall was, you know, in place by then, we took out the old Marshall, we had the park and ride and the bridge. So, we did a number of things, and really solved probably two-thirds of the problems that we're having at the interchange. But we only were able to get a single left turn on the existing bridge. So, that's how it was up through 2005. So, when we actually were in the process of designing the improvements for the southwest loop, we had planned to actually add a northwest, a northeast loop. And we had, you know, an IGA was assigned with the City of Louisville to carry, that was the plan we had in place, southwest loop and northeast loop, and we were gonna go and try to get that approved. So, we went through the C.D.O.T. process to get that approved, and by that time, they were just starting the US 36 EIS, started in 2003, was completed in 2010. So, it took seven years to complete the US 36 EIS. So, we're in the, beginning of the process, and C.D.O.T. said, look, we'll let you build the southwest loop, but the northeast loop, we're gonna put that on hold, because we don't know what the footprint of the turnpike's gonna be, there were these plans with these superstops and stations in the middle, and this wide footprint for the turnpike. So, they put us on hold, and so we basically stood back, and our IGA with Louisville said, all right, wait till the EIS is complete, figure out what matches the EIS recommendations, and then once it's complete, we'll either go and proceed with the northeast loop design and construction, or come up with some other alternatives. So, in late 2010, when, well, what happened in, with the EIS, they basically said, they weren't gonna support the northeast loop, and basically because it required acquisition of private-owned property on Louisville's side, and the space available to build the northeast loop wasn't enough to provide an adequately designed loop. And so, they basically said, no, we don't want the loop, we recommend a dual-left-turn lane, and to replace the bridge. And this is the design that was included, the concept that was included in the EIS. And you notice this, if you count the lanes on the bridge, there are nine lanes on the bridge. The loop, the southwest loop was recommended to be a double loop. We had a triple-left-turn lane coming off the eastbound loop. We had a double on-lane ramp, we had the on-ramp, the exit, the westbound exit ramp was a dual, a dual ramp as well. There are also plans for raising the vertical elevation of the turnpike to go up about 10, 13 feet to provide for Coal Creek flooding. So, a number of things are going on, and this is probably a $30, $40 million project. So, that was the recommendation from the EIS, but they basically said, well, that's the long-range plan, we're gonna proceed with phase one, which is the managed lane. Just put the managed lane in, someday, way off in the future, this is gonna be the long-range plan. So, when that happened, when that was complete, we went to Louisville and said, we think the northeast loop can still fit, we'd like you to give it a try. Louisville basically said, no, we don't want the northeast loop, our position is, it affects us. So, we kind of stepped back, and we, two communities basically said, all right, let's start a study, look at things from a fresh perspective, based on what's happened, based on the EIS, and assess the existing interchange operations, develop future traffic forecasts. As you recall, the Verheb property now is open space, that occurred during that whole time, there's a number of things that had happened. Let's evaluate interchange design alternatives, let's look at maybe new road connections, other overpasses or underpasses connecting two communities, and then recommend a preferred alternative. So, that's why we're here tonight, we're in the midst of this study, we've come quite a ways, we had a public open house back on February 2nd, we've been developing a number of alternatives, so I'm gonna present some of those tonight, and present kind of the final two alternatives that we're down to. So, existing conditions, some of the issues we're having, and this, these photos, these next few photos are taken early in the morning, so not as much traffic on here as you might expect. But this is, you know, Louisville's over here, Superior's over here, here's the southwest loop. So, we have on the northbound left-turn lane going to Boulder, we have, you know, queues that extend sometimes down to Marshall. On the westbound on-ramp, we now have a ramp meter, and sometimes that extends back. We have uneven lane usage southbound through the interchange, because especially in the morning, people wanna go on the loop, people wanna go through to Superior. So, down here, the innermost lane doesn't really get utilized, everybody wants to be in the rightmost lane, so we're not having good lane utilization. In the afternoon, here's another shot looking from Superior to Louisville, and this is the eastbound off-ramp, and this is the issue we're having with people coming on, wanna go through, and people coming over the bridge, wanting to turn right, and there's that "we" that occurs, that everybody looks, thinks is real dangerous, we don't really have a whole lot of accidents, or serious accidents, because they're low-angle accidents, but everybody perceives that as a problem. So, for, we first looked at traffic forecasts, and we looked at the plans for the US 36 corridor. We basically took Dr. Cog's 2035 model, which incorporated growth in the city Louisville, town of Superior, and the Pollock County growth, and had some of the Jefferson Parkway impacts, Jefferson Parkway corridor, the northwest corridor is in Dr. Cog's model. The forecasts are fairly high, it anticipates that employment in Superior would quadruple, which hopefully Town Center may do that, but.
Because it's Town Center?
That'd be, yeah, it's basically a Town Center, whether that occurs, I mean, or not. And about a 50% growth in land uses on the Superior side and on Louisville's side, anticipating Conning Hill Phillips building out and so forth. On the bridge, on the bridge there, we have about 40,000 vehicles per day right on the bridge, and that was forecast to go to about 67,000, so it's quite a bit.
By when?
By 2035.
2035.
So, the long-term forecasts are fairly, fairly high, and that's what the EIS was based on, and some of these traffic forecasts that we're gonna look at, of whether these alternatives work or not, are based on these long-term forecasts. So, we started this process probably back in late 2011, we agreed upon a scope of services, hired a consultant, and began to look at alternatives and traffic forecasts. So, we developed back then six potential design concepts, an interchange committee composed of a couple of Town Board members from Superior, a couple of State Councilmen from Louisville, plus Town Manager and City Staff and so forth, reviewed these alternatives, threw some out, added one, and carried three on for detailed evaluation. We presented those concepts at the public open house in February. So, just to review the ones that we screened out, here's one where we had a wide diamond, where we'd have a new overpass. Basically, this goes through the, what's this, Sycamore. So, it connects to Sycamore on the south and goes by Home Depot on the north side, and has a ramp here getting on, so you, similar to Sheridan, you know, where Sheridan goes through, and you can go through the Sheridan, and you go on to 92nd. It's similar to that kind of concept. This had issues with EIS, we'd have to go back through the environmental process, because it's a new alignment, had traffic operations concerns, and it was pretty costly. Another one was a tight split diamond, where we built another bridge right next to the old bridge, didn't really do a whole lot for traffic operations, so we threw that one out. Here's a single-point interchange, you see several of these around the metro area, where you take the two intersections and kind of combine them into one, so you have a three-phase traffic signal just right, right there. And the problems with this is, you almost have to, you have to blow out the whole bridge to make this work, because you have to have, you have to bring all the intersections together. The other issue that this has, that the DDI has, is that there's no straight-through movements, so the RTD buses don't have a way to get through the intersection. So, these are the ones that stayed in the process, was the roundabout alternative, had some issues with the operational life, I'll explain this in a minute, had some land use impacts, because we get into this area here, which is some open space, and some land use issues on that side. Cost was actually is probably the most reasonable cost of any alternative. And then, this is the dual northbound left that we'll talk about, in this particular concept, it had a pedestrian bridge on one side. To make this work, we could keep the existing bridge, but we'd have to take the locks off, in order to get the width for the vehicles, we'd have to take the walks off, and then, so you'd have, you have to do something with pedestrians. In this concept, they thought, well, we'll put all pedestrians on this side, well, that wasn't gonna work, so we further refined this, and we have pedestrian bridges on both sides. But we keep the existing bridge. And then, this is the diverging diamond concept, and I'll talk about this a little bit. What we got here? We also looked at new roadway connections, and there were two that Louisville wanted us to take that, and one is a Dahlia extension. Here's Dahlia on the north of Dillon Road, take that, and there's some vacant land here that C.D.O.T. owns, that's where the northwest loop was, northeast loop was gonna go, use that right away, come under the turnpike and connect up to Marshall. So, that was, we looked at that, and it did have, you know, not great potential, I think it drew about 7,000 vehicles from the, from the bridge. And so, it had, at first, we thought, well, that's enough to really, the DDI concept would help solve the long-term problem. The issue we're gonna have with this particular one is that C.D.O.T. now is revisiting the Coal Creek Bridge issue. When they did the EIS, they thought they'd have to raise the whole profile of the turnpike by 13 feet. Now, they came back, well, they looked at a less grandiose solution, and they're talking now about just adding, having three box culverts, replacing, right now it's a bridge, and just replacing with three 10-by-20-foot box culverts. And they feel that that is gonna prevent Coal Creek from overtopping the turnpike. Right now, if Coal Creek floods, 100-year storm, water would go over the turnpike a couple of feet deep, so.
Alex, is that, when they, when C.D.O.T. does that, are they including development from the town of Superior in terms of projected runoff and development?
Well, we don't, we haven't seen their flood analysis.
Oh.
And also, what's happening now is that we've, we're about to undertake a study of Rock Creek and Coal Creek drainage way studies from St. Howard 93 all the way through Louisville, Erie, and Lafayette. So, we're looking at that whole drainage area, and we're gonna be looking at that, you know, now that C.D.O.T. selected that alternative, what does that do to our floodplain issues? How much water can that carry? What's it gonna do to the Superior Town Center area? So, well, hopefully, all these things come together, that we have, that study's ongoing.
Yeah, that's a new one to me, that study.
Yeah, so that's, that's going on, and we've asked those questions. We have, all we've seen is this plan for the three-box culverts, we haven't seen any kind of drainage or floodplain study to show how much water that can contain.
What about this other study of taking, of the drainage for those two creeks?
Mm-hmm. Urban drainage.
Urban drainage.
Right, and we've, they've, we're just in the consultant selection process, so we're gonna be interviewing consultants in a couple of weeks. That's gonna be about a 48-week study, so it's not like we're gonna have answers overnight, probably not. I'm not sure if we'll have anything in terms of complaint process from that, but over the next year, we'll, we'll be studying those issues.
Okay. So, that was the other, the other, let me go back here.
So, they're basically leaving the elevation of US 36 where it is today, not raising it by 10 or 13 feet. So, if you think, so we have a 10-foot-deep box culvert at Coal Creek. To go under the turnpike, you need probably a 16-to-18-foot hole to be able to pass trucks, you know, down below. So, you're down like four feet below Coal Creek, now you're moving a little bit to the west, so you're going up in elevation, but you end up, the bottom of that, of the Dahlia underpass would be about the same level as Coal Creek. So, we have some issues with how you keep water out. You know, you may have to pump water, it could be a real expensive situation.
They want that to be an underpass, not a bridge? Not a bridge?
At, well, so, there's, you could go over, sure, but we're up 16, 18 feet, one of Louisville's concern with northeast loop, you have this high wall up there, so now you're gonna have this big bridge going over, and then, how do you touch down? So, you have, you have some significant issues going up, up as well. So, it's, after looking at all those things, it doesn't appear that the Dahlia one is in our short-term plans, it may be something way down the road, but right now, we don't think it's a possibility for the interim solution. The other alignment they looked at is extending Campus Drive. Here's a Vista Hospital, Campus Drive is right where Monarch High School is, extending that over and connecting into the Town Center system. This did not pick up a whole lot of traffic, didn't do a whole lot for McCaslin, it picked up, you know, five or 6,000 vehicles, but it's not people that are, you know, that would have used McCaslin, I mean, because 88 kind of serves their quarter right now. So, that didn't really solve the McCaslin traffic issue, so that was kind of discarded. So, we went with those three options, the public open house, I think in your packet, I sent out the. I, I think in your packet, I sent out the summary of the comments we received. These are just three major ones. The proposed design should meet or exceed the capacity of Northeast Loop. We had Northeast Loop design, we had real good operations, and so want to try to at least match that with any alternative we're looking at. The second was, it came out, and if you read those comments, the same comment is there, five or six times. This weave issue is just confusing, we don't like it, we feel it's unsafe. It's going to cause issues, so do something about that. And then there's issues about queues from the bridge backing up to Marshall. And then obviously that affects a lot of operations on Marshall and McCaslin. Those are major comments, a bunch of other ones that are in public open house. The Northeast Loop, just to, because that came out, I just wanted to refresh memory of what we were trying to do with the Northeast Loop. We, we couldn't really duplicate this over here because we would be into the parking lot, we would be into the area here. But we had this chunk of land that CDOT owns, so we tried to take advantage of that by coming off here, leaving the existing ramp in place, and then going under, staying down, going under again, and coming back. From a visual standpoint, here's the, again, if you duplicated the loop, we would be back in this area. So we came down, there it is there. Come down, go under, stay under, and come back. So that was the, the concept of the Northeast Loop. Take advantage of the property we had here to build a loop with similar operations. And basically what this was doing was taking this intersection and going from a three-phase intersection to two, two-phase intersection. By doing that, you free up traffic for the northbound and southbound movements as well as the, the westbound movement. So that was the concept. So we performed evaluations of basically the roundabout and the north, dual northbound lefts and the diverging diamond intersection at, at various five-year intervals. We look at costs, and we have some of the, the results of those evaluations. This is what the dual left has evolved into. Here's the dual left going on to the westbound ramp. We added a bridge on each, each side to provide for the pedestrian movements. All right, here's your spaghetti bowl with the, the diverging diamond. So what we do here is we take the northbound two lanes on McCaslin. We cross them over the southbound lanes, so we have a traffic light here. And then we go northbound, so now instead of the wet eastbound traffic having to stop to go to Lewisville, this is a, this is a yield condition here. And so the three lanes go across, and then to go onto the turnpike, you have a free left turn movement. So basically, if you go into Boulder, you stop once, and then you have kind of a free-flowing situation onto the turnpike. Conversely, the southbound traffic again stops once here, and then before we had the loop that was free-flowing. Now we have, the southbound comes down and stop here, and then they have a free left.
Okay.
So let me demonstrate a couple of things now. For the dual left, what I'm going to show you here is the twenty-twenty-five scenario, because by twenty thirty, thirty, it breaks down. So several things that, that we had to do to make this work with our traffic projections. You know, we have the Superior Marketplace, either, I'm going through. Off-road here. Well, we included the traffic from the town center. So they're coming in, we had to put a double left turn lane in the southbound direction. We have a triple left on the eastbound Marshall, and we have double left going northbound. So we have so much congestion from this area, from this intersection, that kind of permeates through the, the system. But you can see here, the, the westbound off-ramp has issues. Southbound McCaslin from Dillon has issues. Here's the northbound left. This is the PM operation in twenty-twenty-five. If I showed you twenty-thirty, everything breaks down. So, so this is northbound, and we have, you know, Yewamqueues here, we have these queues extending. Look at these queues on the eastbound ramp. So this is going to be the diverging diamond, and this is the twenty-thirty scenario. Couple of things we, we did in this, again, we have the triple left, we have double left southbound. And here's the, the left turn coming off, staying on this side, and then they cross over here. Here, you can see the northbound crossing over, and then there's stopping there. There we go, there's the left turn going on to the turnpike. What we were able to do here for the weave maneuver, and there's something we didn't, we didn't think that was going to, we didn't, the consultants were able to do this. Because of the crossover, they designed a, a triple right. And if you think what happens here, at this, at this crossover intersection, we're holding back the southbound traffic. Right now, if you look at the bridge, they have eighty seconds green time. There's a continuous stream coming off the bridge. So you're trying to make that right and merge into that traffic, and you just have this traffic coming over the, the bridge. So since we're stopping that, we're stopping the southbound traffic, and this is a hundred-second cycle. So you, you're stopping at forty-five seconds or so during each phase. You can stop that, hold them back, and then the triple right, you're also holding back the ramp, but then you're allowing all three lanes to go. So we're basically separating that, we don't have a merge yield situation, we're separating out by, by the traffic light. And so when those three lanes go, they don't have any conflicts, they just go and you take, again, you take one lane, goes to the southbound left at Marshall. One lane would go through, and the other lane would go to, to Marshall. So we've saw, I mean, this is one benefit we have with the diverging diamond is we really can address that issue. Whereas with the Northeast Loop, we didn't do anything on that, on this side of the interchange, so we still had that problem with the, the merge. So that's one benefit of the diverging diamond that we didn't have before. So again, you can see this going, there's a lot of traffic, but, you know, nothing's really backing up into intersections like you had with the dual left. So this is, this is twenty-thirty traffic. Question is asked, well, can you go further? And the real issues are some of the intersections, and you can, you can make some of the ramps. Like here, we have a, a single-lane off-ramp there, you can make that double, you can singleize that. So you could add some capacity in other ways without widening the bridge. So we have, the issue with the existing bridge, we had to do the same thing as dual left. We had to take the sidewalks off so we can get three lanes northbound, three lanes southbound, and we put the pedestrians on separate bridges.
Why is it, and the, the cost of widening the bridge is so exorbitant that it's always not considered right?
We're trying to preserve that, the existing structure without having to.
But you're adding the structure of a pedestrian bridge on the other side.
Yeah, we thought, I mean, pedestrian bridges, yeah, they're lighter weights, they're not, they're not as expensive.
But you're preserving the bridge. Alex, is that because it's a relic, or it's because the cost? To, to just tear the whole thing all out and.
Well, cost.
Whatever you do then in terms of widening it, spanning it, which is done everywhere, the cost is just exorbitantly high. And then these other improvements is difficult to tie it in.
Right, and then other DBIs that, well, it's, it's not many, there's only one. The one in Missouri actually crosses the pedestrians to the median.
Oh.
Yeah, so we're, we're leaving the pedestrians on, on the side. So it's a design issue, and I think that whole thing, once we get further into all these design issues, we have to look at the concept first. Choose the concept and then go further with the design and make those kind of calls from a design perspective. So here, here was that triple left, triple right. And again, the three lanes are coming, and we're holding back the southbound lanes so they can, actually, it's these lanes here, so they can go all together.
Is that ramp immediately to the left of where you were just pointing? Is that a bus-only on-ramp?
Okay, the other things that we're, we're doing here, because we can't allow straight-through movements, we said, well, what are we going to do with the, the buses? So this is the concept we look at. Can we great-separate the buses from the ramps? And so we're taking the ramp over the off-ramp over the buses. So it'll be on the pad, the buses would go under the ramp. Now we've, this, again, this is a design issue. Question is, why don't you just take the pedestrians over the ramp and, you know, let the pedestrians get on somewhere? If they can, you know, get, get on over here, get over here, and keep, you know, keep the buses, let the buses pull off, put the pedestrians over. It's easier on this side, on, over here, it's, we're pretty tight on that side. So that's a design issue as we go through. So the other benefits we have.
Yes, this is expensive.
Doing those adds about five million dollars to the cost of, of this project. But it has significant benefits for bus riders. If you think about the buses, they get caught at a traffic signal, they're working, they're waiting over a minute to, to go through the interchange. By having these great separations, every bus rider that goes through there is going to experience some travel time savings. Up to, up to a minute, maybe eighty seconds going through. Significant benefit for bus riders. To me, I look at this and I remember the vision we first had for US thirty-six and the buses. We were going to have this super stop, you know, that the buses just have to stop and go on, they wouldn't have to go through any intersections. This is very close to that vision of what the, the BRT was going to be. I look at what, what they've been proposing lately with, let's do BRT instead of commuter rail. This is a BRT improvement. You know, it's five million dollars, but it has big save, travel time savings. They're, they're talking about putting this queue jump lane in, I don't know if you've seen that. They're spending a hundred-and-fifty thousand, two-hundred thousand up here to say, to get buses to the head of the line. When buses make it through, what are they saving? A couple of seconds per run, whereas this is saving, you know, a minute per run for all bus riders. So there's significant benefits for the bus riders.
What happened to the BRT station in the middle of the road of Iowa?
Well, that's, that's our concern here. If you have pedestrians waiting here and you have traffic whizzing by here and traffic whizzing by on the other side. So it's, it's a much more uncomfortable situation. So I, I favor this one, but I think there's probably a cheaper one if you want to go. And it's, these are the discussions we have to have with RTD. Okay, so here's, here's some of the evaluation measures. We, we really came down to these two options. The roundabout had some issues, I'll show you in a minute here, but came down to dual left turn lane and a diverging diamond. And so we'll, I want to present some performance measures for those concepts. Costs for the dual left would be about three-point-seven million dollars. And then, and basically, it's for those pedestrian bridges, that, each one, those two bridges add about a million and a half. You'd have to deal with that only in about two million dollars to, to do the double left. The life stand, as you saw in dual left, it breaks down about, in about ten years. So it's a, it's a, it's a fairly reasonable cost, but only takes you so far before things break again. So the diverging diamond with the RTD improvements costs about twelve million dollars. And that's going to last fifteen years, another five years. Here you have benefits, and, and the benefits are based on travel time savings, comparing the, the options over what is going on now. If you just did a no-build, these are travel time savings. So through twenty-twenty, dual left, you know, has that cost and this benefit, so the benefit cost is about three-point-three. The diverging diamond has a little less because the, the cost is so high initially. We're not getting super benefits in the first five years. The first, yeah, the first five years going through twenty-twenty. As you go farther out in time, we still have a benefit through twenty, twenty-five, five-point-two-eight, the diverging diamond is catching up. And then in twenty-thirty, we have a significant benefit because during that, all that time, we have travel time savings over the, the no-build. What they haven't, this is really only vehicle, travel time savings, they didn't really factor any of the RTD bus ridership benefits. And I think that's a fall, you know, not a fallacy, but a deficiency in this particular analysis. Travel time savings, we asked for them to look at the amount of time going through the, the interchange and how that compares with the no-build, look at the six-lane diverging diamond, and compare that with the Northeast Loop. Because the comments at our open house said, compare this with the Northeast Loop. We had a gold standard there, compare whatever you ever do against it. So these are for various movements, just going through, what we did is looked at the simulation and looked at just north of Marshall going through the interchange to the north. What was the time going, northbound, southbound, and then going from the Superior side, getting on to the turnpike, going to Boulder, and then from the, coming from Denver, going back to Superior. AM and PM, the green shows the winner, so the Northeast Loop wins a couple of the movements, and then the diverging diamond wins a couple of movements. So it's about a wash between the diverging diamond and the Northeast Loop. And the reason why is that they're both basically working on the same principle. They're trying to take the intersections and put them on two phases instead of three phases. So the diverging diamond has two phases at both intersections, and so does Northeast Loop, so they, they should be about the same. So in the summary of the options, we, we carried the roundabout through, we costed it out, it was about three million dollars, but it had significant issues over five years. And, and the reason why is that the westbound off-ramp, as you're coming off the turnpike, that particular movement conflicts with the northbound through movement. The northbound through movement comes up, and they don't have any left turns to kind of slow them up. So it's a continuous stream, the westbound can't get on, and it backs up onto the turnpike, so it breaks down. So it's about, it'll handle what's out there now, but in about five years, that, that backs up, and we have traffic that backs up onto the mainline. The four-lane diverging diamond, we looked at this because you wouldn't have to take the walks off. You can use the existing bridge and, and make it work and with minimal improvements, and it would be very costly to do that. Problem is, if you think about it now, we have three southbound lanes on the bridge, and we're going to two. Well, obviously, we're going to have a problem, so it, it didn't work in the very short term because we, it's less lanes over the bridge. So the dual left of northbound ramps, again, about $3.7 million. It needs the pedestrian bridges because to get that additional lane, we need to take off the walks. It's good for about 10 years, so it's a short-term option, and it's something that, you know, if that's all we can afford, at least it buys us some time. Doesn't have any effect on the RTD operations. The six lane diverging diamond, this is a new innovative concept. Some may say it's a confusing concept, but it's only been tried a couple of times in the country, but several, a lot of entities are interested in the concept. CDOT would really like to try one here.
Where is it now?
Missouri, Utah, are the two states that I know that are up and operating.
In Salt Lake? In Salt Lake in Utah?
So if you just Google diverging diamond, you'll see all the ones that are either in operation or being considered. So the price tag, you know, it's about 12.3 to do the grade separation for the bus ramps, to do, take the bridges, take the walks off, build the pedestrian bridges. So it's a big price tag, but about $5 million is really due to the grade separated bus ramps. It's good for about 15 years, but it does reach capacity in 2030 with the design that we had. I think if we add some more lanes on the ramps, we maybe will get a little farther. There's similar operations to the northeast loop. One thing it does do that, none of the things we've looked at, it addresses that, the council to Marshall weave. It has major benefits to bus riders. So this is, we're implementing, we're not only improving traffic operations, we're solving our weave and we're getting the bus riders great benefits here. So that's it, but it does need probably a lengthy approval process. It's a new concept because we're changing the point of access to US 36, putting the bus ramps in. If you remember, we went through a 1601 process when we built the southwest loop, so we have to go through that process, which would take about a year. There may be additional environmental work to be done. One of the considerations we have here is that, right now, they're thinking about phase two of the US 36 improvements. And it would be nice to get our concept or design included in this process. And what they're doing in May or June, they're actually going out for RFP. Right now, they have an RFQ looking at qualified contractors, and then to those that they select, they're going to give an RFP, basically saying, here's the design, you give us a cost and a method of doing it and a timeframe, and based on that, it's basically a design-build project that they were doing on phase one that they just awarded. So they want to go out and do the same thing, go on. So if we can get this project into the hopper, that contractor could give us prices, and we get better prices because it's all part of a larger project. If we just did the northbound dual left, probably slam dunk. It's in the EIS, it's not anything new, we're implementing the EIS, here it is. We don't need any more approvals. Diverging diamond, probably take a year to go through all the approval process. So that's one issue you need to look at. Okay, I'm done. Here's the next steps. We had a meeting of the interchange committee this morning. I can report on that, but Louisville was receptive to the diverging diamond as a long-term solution. At least the people over at the committee, they still have to go to their board and get the approvals and so forth. Planning commission is here. We hope that you have enough information to make a recommendation. Certainly, if you want to take some more time, whatever, but we're asking for your input. We're trying to schedule another public meeting to, now that we've got all the data collected, if so is it again, back to the public and ask for their input. And then we want to go to the Louisville City Council and the Superior Town Board and try to come up with a united front, let's agree on an alternative. Instead of fighting, let's agree on something, let's go to the regional agencies on a united front with a plan that both communities can buy into. So that's where we're headed.
What's the, in terms of construction? Is this a complicated construction project or medium or not so bad?
It's complicated because we have a bridge that we tried, we have to keep open to traffic. That's the complicating factor. And so we're changing, we're going from a traditional intersection to traditional intersections to these crossovers. So it'll be interesting. It's not going to be slammed up. We haven't thought that far because we're looking at the concepts and then figure out how we're going to construct it is the next thing.
But it's, you have that aspect to it. However, if someone else is built, what you're probably learning from them?
Right, we're going to figure out how they did it.
Yeah.
Kind of learn by their experience.
I've got a question. I know phase one has just been recently approved. And I know there's a tremendous amount of filled material being brought in to raise elevations between Sheridan and Boulder. Has there been any consideration with how that's going to meld with this whole concept?
Not yet, you know, we're trying to come up with a concept that we can agree upon. Once it looks favorable from Louisville, CDOT, RTD, then we'll start, you know, trying to. We've always started thinking about phase two and trying to say, look, if we want to get to phase two, we have to make some decisions here because it's possible we could still get into the window for phase two and then deal with those issues that there's cost savings. So right now, we have a window where we may have some cost savings just because there may be another major project coming along and a contractor that's doing that work that we can kind of piggyback on.
Because the rumor on the street right now is there's going to be a big shortage of material, filled material available in the northern Denver area.
Really, okay. Well, in this, there's going to be some, if the grade separations are built, there'll be some.
Can you go back to just the double, the diversion diamond configuration?
That was the actual diagram.
Yeah, drawing. So what, well, you didn't, we didn't really address the pedestrian safety through this? I'm just curious about how the pedestrians navigate.
It's a concern that I think we really need to address, but.
Because theoretically, if you're going to pass all the way through, it looks like you're crossing, you have four different crossings. Is that fair?
Four.
Or four conflict points, right?
You know, here, we have the same issue in that we have this free movement.
Yes, that's the same.
So that'll be the same because you're crossing here. This is stopped, okay, so we're crossing that. We've taken away the free right here.
Why would anybody want to go there? That's tough.
To walk all the way across it?
You betcha.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm wondering about.
So in other, and like the one in Missouri, what they did was here, they would cross the pedestrians here, get them to the middle, take them there, and then cross at the light. So they're not, they're not.
There's like two crossings. There's only two crossings.
Yeah, but they're not crossing any free lefts.
And there's no, but in this case, we don't have room for the pedestrians down the middle.
Right, and that would have been, we don't because we're trying to, you know, again, getting into your design, maybe it's more cost-effective to add on to the bridge and put the pedestrians here. That's something, I guess, through the design process, how do pedestrians feel about going through this? And right, what about bikes? Bikes don't feel very good either. It's not a very pleasant, you know, right now, and it won't be in the future. Although, you know, if we had the median, I think it's a little bit safer because you're going with traffic flow here. But this is stopped here, so these guys can go across. And then they may cross at signals, whereas they don't have to cross any ramps. Whereas the design we've come up with, they have to cross ramps, so they're at risk. Other things you could do is you could signalize those crossings and make the traffic stop. So those are the design issues. We don't have a whole lot of pedestrians, so it's not going to.
Yeah, I was going to say, I guess that there's not that many pedestrians and.
But there are some because buses stop on the bridge and people go from one side to the other, and they're digging across.
Yeah.
Are there any traffic safety issues, this diverging diamond situation, like accident incidence rates established yet?
We haven't done that, I don't think they've been opened on enough. That's certainly something we can try to research and see. I would assume that they are not any different because they're going from three phase to two phase. I would expect them to be safer. We still have, we still have a lot of issues with the northbound left. And if you see some of the public comments, one comment was, people are running this, we have that lag arrow at the northbound left, and people southbound are running it. And we've had a couple of accidents out there with that situation. We had, we had to go with the protected operation on that left. And then we started getting queues. So if we didn't have that permitted operation, the interchange would operate a lot better. But we had 20 accidents in 18 months just on that left turn movement. And so we had to take action and put that protective left arrow in there. So we solved the safety problem, although we're still getting some accidents. But I would expect that this would be safer than what it is out there now.
Is drivers getting accustomed to this? Has that been looked at at all? I mean, all of a sudden, you cross over and all of a sudden, you think you're in England.
You have to have a right-hand drive car.
Yes, you could.
We had one, you know, video that kind of shows cars driving through. And it's like you're making a left turn, you know, up here, you're kind of, you're making a left turn sooner than you would, instead of making up here, you're making it down here. I think you're going to need some overhead signing and so forth to get your, make your way out. You found it?
Missouri, how Missouri, you think, Missouri? It's striped pretty easy.
Medians looking at, yeah. I like the pedestrian down the middle thing. Do they have pedestrians on there?
Pedestrians in the middle on that one, right? Pedestrians in the middle.
Is that what they have on that one?
You could pull it up.
Yeah, you could pull it up.
Anyway, so can you go to the double left configuration? So I assume you got, there's been, there were been conversations over time about slip ramps, right? So a slip ramp that took you right off 36 into the marketplace?
Right, well.
But you got to cross Marshall Road or something, right?
You got to cross Marshall Road. This shows it better. Don't have one in Marshall.
Actually, it wouldn't if you could slip ramp right into.
The slip ramp would have to come over here to, here's Marshall, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, so it's on the inside side of Marshall.
You know, I've looked at an option, here's Marshall, of taking, relining Marshall through Fifth. You know, bringing it down through the roundabout. So you kind of terminate Marshall back there and then have the slip ramp come in, become where existing Marshall is over here. But also to counterbalance that is to take a bridge over the turnpike to go to Boulder. But again, you're up and over. The problem with the slip ramp is that it's so close to here. You know, the people that are going to Louisville want to get out here.
I was assuming one that went back west, just the one that gets you off of 36 this way. Does that helps fix this?
That would, yeah, that would fix that problem.
And then, but then what about a slip ramp on it?
But the thing is, you know, if you do that and then this, you're helping. You're helping this down here. Because these people that are doing this can now do that.
True, true, true. The other, but then one was an eastbound slip ramp that gets you onto the turnpike. Have Marshall Road down here, right? Or where? To put you on the turnpike. That doesn't, this isn't really the problem though, is it?
No.
The problem is, as it was explained to me, in both those cases of the slip ramps, you've got the two-way traffic, so coming off the slip ramp this way, you have to signalize it or, you know, they have to come and then make a left or right on Marshall. They can't just slip onto Marshall because.
No, that's what we're saying, it's inside the, it's inside Marshall Road. You don't actually cross from Marshall Road, you come right into that.
Well, I would terminate Marshall Road.
You'd have to, yeah, you'd have to realign Marshall to do that. And then same thing getting on, you'd still have to cross.
Do something down there.
Unless, yeah.
Anyway, I was just, I know that doesn't really fix all the problems, but. And then what's the, what's Fast Track's latest decision related to?
Hybrid, the hybrid or commuter rail?
Is it, did they decide on the commuter rail? I thought that's what.
On the hybrid analysis, they'll build some of the, they'll build commuter rail to Church Ranch. And then sometime in the future, down the road, they extend the commuter rail.
It'll still be bus rapid transit or something all the way to Boulder, right?
Oh, always have a BRT.
Always. Right, we'll never have a train here. So.
At least that's something we have.
So there's no option though then of realigning 36 to run wide in both cases with the exits on and off in the, kind of that double diamond configuration right in the middle?
The single point interchange?
Yeah.
Well, that was an option that was thrown out early in the discussion. You could do that now because you're up, you just have the bridge. You leave it where this is now, you just have the ramps that come in.
Oh, yeah, you could just have ramps come in like that, right? But that's not an option.
Well, we threw it out because we figured it'd be 25, 30 million dollars. And then that isn't even with the, it's all in the bus, you still have the bus issue to.
Right, you just, the buses don't have the through capability, right? Well, I guess I was thinking that the bus, the bus rapid transit would be in a center.
Well, the original concept was to have the super stop.
Right, have the super stop, right.
Have buses stop here and let off passengers and let them take the, go up the stairs to the bridge. The problem, the problem that happened with that was that you had the HOV lane with the bus lane, so you'd have to build a bus stop and you'd have to have the lane going around it. So you'd essentially have to have two additional lanes plus the buffer separations with that. So it ended up being a very huge footprint to be able to accommodate a lot. And so they threw it out during the EIS process. That was the $2 billion.
Seeing that website that Bob's looking at, which is the Missouri double diamond, makes you believe that's a pretty viable concept, right? It's pretty slick. And so. I think as long as you could deal with the bicycle conflict across the McHale somehow. Because I think, like you said, pedestrian-wise, I mean, I don't know how many pedestrians really cross there or not, you tell me, but.
Maybe it's because somebody is scared to.
And they'll be terrified after this. But cyclists, you know. Maybe it's not any worse for cyclists. Maybe it's not any worse for cyclists. For at least a road biker.
Passes or maybe under that free left lap. I don't know, can you make...
Well, you could make, you could make the pedestrian bridges, you know, right now, what do you have, a six-foot walk? So it's pretty hard for bikes and peds to utilize that. You could go to a 10-foot wide crossing and at least have it more comfortable for bikes to actually use that and get off and not go over the bridge.
Alex, what's the condition of that bridge right now?
Oh, it was built in... It was built in the 80s. So it's almost 30 years old, and it probably has another 30 years of life to it. It's been inspected and it's not ready to come down.
Right, well, I was just gonna ask the question, because they're all rated. All the bridges are, they have a classification rating. So we're saving something that's worthwhile, so that's my opinion.
I have one, John.
Yeah?
With all the spaghetti or whatever, it doesn't seem to be like... That it probably complicates it more or less.
Fred, can you...
But I'm trying to, I'm trying to... I'm thinking about the town center, how you leak, you know, things back and forth. I don't know if any of this makes it any more complicated than it is right now, if you left it the way it was, to try to link both sides together. We've never even tried to deal with that problem at all. But it's something to think about, but I'm not sure, you know, as to how far in the south this extends, that we still end up with the same magnitude of problem that we have now? Or am I wrong about that? But you haven't, you guys haven't thought about that 23 degree, about how to get whatever? Let's say you have a town center, we have pedestrians over there, they're trying to get the VRT. How does that work for people who know, so they can get over to that VRT in an efficient manner? I don't think this, even though it was complicated, I don't think it probably makes much difference, because it's about the same level of problem.
You mean, on either option?
Yeah, either option.
Alex, so what's the funding mechanism here? I mean, is this, are these improvements intended to be split between Louisville and Superior? Or is there some CDOT money?
You don't have to worry about that, that's not yours.
I'm not asking, I'm not asking... Yeah, I didn't ask you. No, I mean, is it, but is it, is there CDOT money that's participating in this?
Yeah, let me just answer this question. You know, the original EIS contemplated an underpass, a McAsland on that side. So from the town center, you know, here's a bike path, and this is still in the plan. This is actually in phase, I think this is in phase one, building this, the bikeway. So, you know, goes to Coal Creek. So from the town center, you could bike at least to this side to get to a stop without having to cross McAsland. We still have, we still have our problem over here of how to do it. And it's certainly something that, right now, is a pretty tough situation. And we're contemplating crossing at Marshall. You know, at the singleized intersection at Marshall. And when you do that, you're really gonna mess traffic up, because you're gonna cross a wide intersection with the pedestrian phase.
Going back to your...
Well, I, you know, there's something to think about, because if, for example, the town board decides to go through with this zoning issue over across the way from the town center, it would seem to me that a question there would be, well, if you're gonna build that, or if you want the zoning, what's the accommodation for leakages back and forth? I mean, that, to me, is a question that somebody should ask besides me. Because it would be, it should be, to some degree, it's important to everybody, should be included at least to some degree in the zoning document, that developers coming in in the future are gonna have to deal with that issue as the project starts to get developed, as it expands. And so I'm reasoning it only so that we think about, and people are, like you're all involved in the transportation part, think about how that can link up with some concepts, because maybe those concepts should be included in the PDZO plan. I don't wanna make that more complicated than it is, but...
Well, we do have great separation on McAsland now, of course.
Right.
So Fred, this did come up, I think, in the comp plan discussion last night.
To some degree, yes.
To some degree, moving pedestrians back and forth across McAsland and under 36 potentially. I hope we address it there as well.
If this happens, the planning commission will be involved in reviewing that zoning plan somewhere down the line in this year. So trying to get this stuff married together a little bit would probably be worthwhile. We'll need your expertise and how to help with that. The concept, concepts that we might suggest in the zoning.
And certainly, one opportunity we have with the DDI.
What did the pedestrian bridge, the RTD pedestrian bridge cost? What was the total cost of that?
Four million.
Anybody know?
Four million.
Four?
And so you're talking about five million, just, or how much was it to add the two, to widen this bridge to accommodate pedestrians? What's the difference? Of that 12 million?
The two pedestrian bridges are gonna cost about a million and a half together. Trying to look at here. You know, we're moving this a little bit farther to the north. I mean, it could be an opportunity, you know, right in here, to provide a crossing. Especially if we made this more open, I guess. You know, we have an opportunity now with geometrics, rather than putting a tunnel under 100 feet of pavement. You know, maybe daylighting a little bit, so there's, it could be an opportunity. You know, on this side, I'm not sure how it is. I'm just, I wanted to go back to this, because I know we're moving the intersection as far as I know. That there may be an opportunity somewhere around down here, or this area here. We do have, you know, we have drainage issue, we have, this is depressed. So there's some grade we can take care of, you know. Getting here so far, then we down here, we have to make all the drainage work. So it's a good thing to think about and brainstorm a little bit.
This solution, excuse me, meets the 2035 traffic...
2030.
2030? 2035?
2030. It's at capacity at 2030. That's what the consultants thought. Again, 2035 projections, there's issues, but I personally think the traffic forecasts are a little bit high. I wanted to get back to your question about, well, how do you fund this? I think that's where you asked. From our standpoint, you know, if you take the RTD cost out, the bus improvement cost out, take that five million out, we're at $7 million to solve the traffic issues. That's three and a half split. The agreement we have is that we would split with Louisville the cost of the next phase. So three and a half million certainly is not something we're scared of. I think we have more money in the bank from the interchange funding that we've had. So it's certainly not something, Louisville doesn't have any money at this point. And they're looking to us to upfront it and for them to pay us back, or for them to take their costs to fund their share off the sales tax that they would have gotten from the town center. The kicker, so if we're just looking at seven million dollars, I think it's doable from our standpoint and from their standpoint. It's the extra five million.
And you think, but you don't think RTD is gonna get through that?
Well, we're saying, I mean, I look at it, you know, we're doing a big favor. We're really, this five million is to benefit buses.
Yeah, it's not benefiting us, right?
Right. And we could go, if we united on our recommendation, we can go to RTD, CDOT, and Dr. Cox, say, hey, we had money, let me go back. There was money budgeted through Dr. Cox for the northeast loop. That was budgeted and tipped from like five or six years ago. And that money was held until the EIS. It was kind of, Dr. Cox said, you know, what are you gonna do here? You have this money, we need to allocate it to someone else, because you're not using it. They took it back. So we have that ship to call in. We have RTD, we have CDOT that may be receptive to building one of these. So to get to five million dollars, if we're all united, I mean, there could be a pretty good chance. But it's, it takes a while to get programming and to get all the funding pools and so forth. So that could take two, three years to get all that stuff in process.
So is there, there's no solution that's designed today that meets the, something longer than a 15-year impact or so, right?
Well, we, at that point, the bridge is old enough that we just blow out the bridge and...
That's not 30 years.
Yeah, that's not the 30-year lifespan.
Not 30 years.
The other discussion we had is that what's probably driving this is not the bridge itself. It's Marshall and Casland, and it's Dillon and McAsland. That those two intersections really start to get way more traffic to the interchange, you gotta go through those two intersections, and they can't handle a whole lot more. You know, we've done, we had triple lefts on Marshall, we got double lefts on the other approaches, so we're pretty well maxed out of Marshall and McAsland. So any more growth, the growth in Dr. Cox's forecast, we can't handle at Marshall and McAsland. Louisville can't handle at Dillon and McAsland. So if you can't get traffic to it, you don't have to worry about...
No, no one will be able to use the bridge, because there's a deadlock on either.
So I think we'll face the Marshall and McAsland issue long before we face the capacity issues on the bridge.
Was that bridge really designed for cars backing up on that diverging diamond to park? Because that was the one thing I could see, too, would be a problem with that. Because you have those lights and you're waiting for the diverging diamond, the signal to change direction. You've got all that backup happening, there's a lot of traffic.
Yeah, you know, from the simulations, it seems to work pretty well. And it's really, you're throwing traffic for Marshall down here. If you got the triple left coming in, you got any more traffic coming in here, this signal is gonna back up into that before this backs up the other way.
I'm talking about the stuff going north and south across the bridge, and waiting on opposite sides of the bridge for the signal to change.
Does it back up, or is it...
Yeah, it will back up. Has that been taken into account, too?
Yeah, I mean, it was, you know, we got, you know, we can do things here with double lefts and so forth, because you can make these two southbound lanes, if there's a lot more traffic going to Denver, you can make that a double left. And vice versa, here, you can make this a double left. So there's other things we can do that we haven't tested to go through. We just tested this particular design.
Okay? Questions or comments?
I'm glad the roundabout got put down low. At least that looked very, very confusing.
Yeah, it would have been a triple roundabout.
Yeah, I could see that coming. A major accident prone, intersections, that didn't make sense. So I think you're just out of two choices.
So regarding pedestrians, would there be any opportunity to take advantage of the Coal Creek Trail linkage? And since we're not gonna touch that property just to the north of the ramp, bring pedestrians, at least from the town center, through the Coal Creek Trail, but then turn them left back up into, yeah, along that area, we're not allowed to put the loop in, right?
Can there be a trail built here?
Okay, that could connect to the Coal Creek Trail?
Yeah, that would be connected. That would be built with phase one of the turnpike. So that's being built here. But they're crossing, they're crossing at great, you know, at the singleized intersection.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
So we would ask, you make a recommendation, choose one of these, or if you want to delay it and come back, if you need more information, but we're, this may be a train that's heading down the pike, so...
Do you have any idea what the impact on cost would be if we moved pedestrians down the center and have to expand that bridge to accommodate that?
If you widen the bridge?
If you widen the bridge to accommodate pedestrians going down the middle, which means you have to, you would have to expand the bridge enough to handle a lane of traffic, right?
Yeah, I would say maybe add a million, two million dollars, because you're replacing the pedestrian bridge on a vehicle bridge, so you have to have, you know, probably a different structure, and it's not a separate one, it has to be adjacent to it. So there'll be some cost, but is it significant? I mean, that's something you may wanna weigh in on.
Be 10, 20%. So it seemed like that doesn't affect, I mean, it's better, considerably better than it is today, because you've got four crossings you're dealing with, or three, three or four, depending, I guess, which side you're on today. Whereas with this...
If you put people down the middle, then you'd have two crossings.
You have two crossings, so we actually, which is better than most bridges like this, where you often have two or three, depending on...
And you don't have conflicting movements, because when you're...
Right. You're all looking one way.
You're going with the direction of traffic, no one's crossing against you.
Right, yeah. Yeah, even when you're traveling, yeah, you're looking at traffic coming.
And you're losing the expense on both sides. You're basically taking that, putting it all to the middle.
Right, so, yeah, so you're taking that and you're building, you know, you're putting another span or whatever on it. And to me, that was how I initially envisioned this, with the pedestrians in the middle, but the consultants came up with these pedestrians on the side, and I still kinda questioned that. So, I mean, that certainly is something that you can forward on with your comments.
Yeah, I mean, that seems to be my biggest concern about this, was the pedestrian movement. If you could address that the way they did on that Missouri...
You know, again, you're walking down the center of the bridge with traffic on both sides. Is that better experience?
It may be a little unsettling, but at least it's, it's like, although it's like being a pedestrian in England, you just gotta make sure you don't look the right way, if you step off the curb, right?
Well, I think if you're a pedestrian, you're not gonna be an odd pedestrian. You're someone that's going to get used to using that particular span. And so you become more familiar with what you have to be more cautious about.
Yeah, it isn't a casual...
They had some median separation or something, too, right?
Oh yeah, they were like, it looks like there's...
It's like a guard.
There's being, yeah, oh yeah, there's good three.
If you're gonna spend the money, you're right, right?
Yeah. Try to avoid all the accidents.
If you separate it, it cuts down on what I call driver confusion. You're doing something that's kinda diametric to normal traffic.
You mean, do it by doing what?
By widening that area between the two switch-over lanes. I mean, we're basically going to left or...
You're sort of disguising what you're...
Kind of disguising.
I think when you're driving, you're gonna follow what the road does.
Well, I mean, you drive by the lanes, right?
Yeah, you're just gonna follow the lanes. And I think, but with the pedestrians down the middle, you sort of don't see the other side.
It is sort of elegant.
Yeah, it is elegant.
You know, you have one stoplight, and then you're actually on unimpeded onto 36. And that's pretty slick.
Yeah, I think it's pretty cool. I think we should recommend that. That we would like to forward the double.
I've liked it since I saw it at the meeting. It's, it just, the more I've thought about it, looked at it, talked to people about it, it just seems... For like, I get the loop, that's, well, maybe even equally the same. Trying to visualize that it's, or conceptualize that it's truly the same.
Well, I think the added benefit, like you said, of the...
I think it is.
I just like the pointer, by the way. Is this crossover, the weave, it addresses that unexpectedly, right?
Again, you need to realize the trade-off we have. Now we're gonna have more delays on that eastbound ramp. The people are gonna have to stop and wait for a light to change. Whereas now, they're coming in, light traffic, they just proceed on, no delay.
I mean, instead of this loop here?
Yeah, I mean, right now, they're coming off in light traffic, these guys kind of have a free... If you're going to Marshall, it's a free ride, no delay. Now, if you go to Marshall...
I was delayed tonight, that's why I was late.
It's not supposed to be, there's a yield sign there.
How many people pay attention to it?
People are dead to...
But here coming in, some people do, yeah.
You know, if you don't hit the light, you're gonna wait for, you know, 50 seconds or so.
So that right is, so that's not a free ride? So that right is, so that, that's not a free ride. That's a right.
Everybody stops.
So the cars will queue up here?
Right.
Right.
But, but, yeah, I mean, if you think about it, the right will queue up more than it does now. Right now, you have to sit there for 80 seconds. If you didn't get the light, you have to sit there. It's a 100-second cycle, and you get maybe 10, you get 15, 20 to the side street. So, you know, the left, the left-turning traffic is, is queuing up, but not, not the right turning. But during the, the pink hours.
Onto Marshall? Or off, off the on-ramp here?
Off the on-ramp, yep. But at the times, when that yield guy can't get a gap, he sits there and then people behind him, you know.
Queue up.
So Lewisville then gets onto 36 via the ramp we're using now, okay. So that changes, their right, their loop goes away, okay. And RTD gets a part of that. So then RTD would be able to use the portion at least of the road that's there now. You'd have to reconstruct that portion.
And this is, this is not a, you know, this is tricky here.
It is.
We have some drainage issues here, so we have to go down into an area that we have drainage issues. This is, this is pretty tricky too, to be able to get that under.
So would it be easier, would it be easier to bring the buses to the north of the roadway and have pedestrians go underneath? Is that what you're saying? Okay, cross the pedestrians instead of the buses.
You know, that's something we would discuss with RTD. This is, this makes the vehicles, you know, go through, you know, if you think of the pedestrians going under or over, you may have to go down two flights of stairs instead of one flight to be, to be able to get to.
Parking right is pretty slick.
You're already, yeah, you're already coming down half a story.
All right, so Commissioner Eaton has weighed in on her preference. I like it.
I'm really torn. You know, at my age, I think, do I want to really try something new like that? It's only two in the country. I'm just really torn. My first preference when I saw this come across was the double left, because I know a double left. I know how double left works. I don't like a triple left, but I do like a double left. So.
Did we get 10 years out of the double left? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And we get 15 out of this?
Yeah. So I, I guess that would be my preference, is the double left, because I do understand it more, even though this looks great. I know that it solves a lot of problems that we already have. So, but that's my.
Perfect direction.
I like the diverging diamond, but like, like Phyllis, I am concerned about the complexity of making it happen versus the simplicity of making the double left happen at much lower costs and the benefits. I guess if money was no object, I would say go with the diverging diamond, but.
Time, time and money.
And time and money, because it's, as you pointed out, it's going to take jurors of additional approvals. And although I think now we've got some time, because it's going to be years before anything happens across the street. So maybe we take advantage of that time and do what's going to buy us a longer benefit in the long run.
What if, and what if you spent the money for, to widen the bridge? If you were going to spend the money to widen the bridge anyway, for the double diamond, what if you just widen the bridge, widen up, you know, to improve the double left situation? I mean, what does that get you? If you're going to spend $7 million anyway, I don't know. I mean, you, you're going to create some sort of pedestrian improvement, right?
Oh, that's what, over here, I mean, I mean, the board really is looking for something that's comparable to the northeast loop. And if we're going to do some improvements, let's do it once and get over it, get over and done with.
And that's my question. Will, if we did the double left, and somewhere seven to 10 years from now, we'd have to consider this whole thing all over again.
Right. But you're gonna have to do it neither 10 years or 15 years, no matter what, probably, right?
If you believe the growth pattern.
Right, exactly. If you believe the growth.
If you can get the traffic to it, right? Through Marshall.
Yeah, it would be a nice problem to have, is more traffic coming out of the marketplace than we could ever possibly handle, right?
And we don't have lots of money to do what we need to do.
And the reason we abandoned the northeast loop in the first place was because Lewisville didn't want to do it?
Yeah, we didn't abandon it.
Lewisville did.
They said.
I'm just getting back to why we started looking at alternatives in the first place. But that's essentially what we're talking about. They wouldn't buy into it.
They wouldn't buy, buy into it.
Even though it was originally planned.
That's right.
You've got a big lump of ground out there, it's all by, which is, they're gonna unload someday.
What is, what's the cost on the northeast loop?
It's about, it was about $7 million, we estimated it two years ago. So it's, it's comparable to the DDI road.
So if we gave, if we gave Lewisville, if we paid our half, which would be 3.5, plus we just gave them $3 million in cash to prove it? I'm just saying, it's cheaper than spending $12 million on this, right?
Well, I was, I was looking at the cost, I know.
Hey, it's just simply a matter of negotiation, right? Cash speaks loud, I don't know. Sorry. I guess if I want to do that, I should just run for justice.
On that design for the northeast loop, it didn't really take any from the Outback or anything, because it's got that long, you know, it's kind of a long, long deal to get to the CDOT property.
But that was, the concern there was you're going a third of a mile the wrong way. Two, actually end up going almost a mile to get on the highway. Because you're going a third, two-thirds of the mile, you have to go a third of a mile down, a third of a mile back to get back there, right?
Yeah, I mean, we, we thought this, we didn't think we were impacting the.
That's two or three minutes.
You know, the hotels, I mean, I certainly thought, you know, when we showed them the graphics, that they, they thought there was a real impact.
They, they didn't think there was an impact?
You can see the wall here.
Yeah, you just don't like the wall.
Yeah, I like the wall.
10, 15 feet. But here's, we may end up with some of this wall anyway, because here's the bike path. It's probably going to be running now anyway. And this is significantly higher. This was another concern, because you've taken any views now from up here. That'd be the second floor, the first floor. This is 10, 15. 12 feet.
Raising that up.
But the problem was, is we were trying to match the elevation, that they were going to go up.
They were going to raise the highway.
Because of the bridge. So on, on the one hand, you wouldn't have this kind of wall, but could you even get under here, because now this is lower? So are we going to have problems getting, getting under, because that, that curve will be lower?
Tom, do you have a preference?
Well, that one there is the cheapest, but the diverging diamond, I guess, is the one I guess I would prefer.
Yeah, diverging diamond from a cost standpoint, from an operational standpoint, very equivalent to northeast loop. The big expenses is for the buses, and we're making improvements to, to the BRT operations.
Alex, it seems like that should last longer than, five years longer than double left. What, what's breaking down that, that there's only five more years of life out of the diverging diamond over the?
I think it's more the traffic that's coming from Marshall, McCasland, and Dillon, that there's just so much.
It's the problem on either side. It's not necessarily the diamond itself.
Yeah, I don't think it's the diamond itself.
And so what would be the next, I mean, what would be the next thing you could do to get beyond that? What, I mean, do you still leave a diverging diamond, but you have to do other stuff? I mean, what, what's, what's after the diverging diamond?
Yeah, you know, again, though, we've just got this information last few, I have the same questions. Why is this breaking down in 2030? And why can't we do something to, to make it last longer?
Well, in, in understanding what we could do might help, helps decide what to do now. I mean, if we're talking about in 2035, you know, the bridge gets blown up, then we put another diverging diamond in just because we need a bigger bridge, does that, I do.
Where it doesn't go from there.
Yeah, we're, what, I mean, if it doesn't, I mean.
Well, if it's the diverging diamond itself, you add a lane in each direction.
And that should help, so you go from six to what? You go from six lanes to seven or six to eight?
I don't think that's a solution.
Six to eight, but I would, I would look at improvements to the ramps first, because we have some single lane ramps, and we can make those double lane ramps.
Okay, yeah, you mentioned that. It's back and bias a little more time.
Right.
And there could be other movements that we, that we didn't, that isn't in the, ultimately in the analysis. So the, the conversation of connecting Marshall and Dahlia or whatever, those types of, you know, future bridges or whatever.
I think that was the discussion with the interchange committee. All right, we can't solve the 2035 problem, but maybe the solution is Dahlia or some other connection between the two communities, that we get enough traffic off that, that McCasland alignment is, is not so congested. I mean, 67,000 vehicles going across the bridge.
Sounds like a lot to me.
It's, it's a lot to me, and I kind of question those things, and I think that.
What's the current count, 40?
40,000, yeah.
Well, if you had 2,000, if you had, if, if the existing conflict, which calls for 2,000 residential units in the, in the new town center, if that happens, then, then, yeah, you probably are going to hit that number.
Well, you're going from, you know, we have 12,000 people now, we increased the town's superior's population by 20.
Well, 20%.
15, 20%, it's not doubling.
No, you're right, yeah, yeah.
And then you have the employment quadrupling, the superior's employment, to me, seems a lot.
Isn't a big number.
So the other thing I wanted.
12 employees.
I wanted to test some of the, some of these improvements. The other thing that, that happens on, on, McCasland north of Dillon, traffic's doubling on McCasland north of Dillon. I'm going, well, what's going on up there? That, you shouldn't have that much traffic, because, you know, Lewisville's pretty much built out. Again, you have ConocoPhillips is developing this traffic being pulled from the Boulder area. I think that, to me, what, what's really going on here is that Boulder doesn't want traffic on Turnpike, and they've, and they've kind of constrained it. And so traffic's trying to use McCasland.
We got Jerry Dale in South Baltimore.
Right, so traffic's sitting on and off at McCasland and voiding the poor level of service on US 36. So I will, I will bring up, carry those conversations at some point, try to get those answers for what, what can be done to go beyond.
What, and I haven't asked you yet, so.
I'm, I'm all for the diverging diamond. I just think it solves so many problems, but cannot go with it. So.
It's basically $5 million to, to give us the, the difference between the double left and the diverging diamond is how much about?
About nine.
About nine.
Eight, they're worth $3 million.
And that's primarily to give us the level of service like the loop, giving us the freedom. I mean, it gives us a lot more, but I mean, it's.
I think you're doubling the cost to get to the same level of service, and then you're adding $5 million to solve the bus issue. Going from double left, doubling that solves the traffic issue and gets it to northeast. You know, the other thing that, that in terms of dealing with RTD, we could not do anything with RTD.
Let them figure it out.
Let them figure it out. Let them try to figure out how to get through the interchange.
Yeah, I was going to ask that question. I just didn't know. They might have to go up and do a U-turn here.
If you want my other idea, I can, I can tell you what that is, but you promised not to repeat it.
Should be their problem.
Right, yeah, I mean, we presented a solution that helps them out.
I think that's a good solution.
So if the, let me just ask this question. If the traffic, if we don't believe the traffic counts, for instance, how far does that take the double left?
Years out?
Yeah. Does that, I mean, it's obviously a hypothetical question too, right? You're sort of rolling the dice.
Oh, because you can't answer it.
No, I guess what I'm, I would say is that when you build a town center, I don't think the double left can handle the town center. It's going beyond, so it can't, it fails there when the town center is built. But then going beyond that, something else is going on that, that I don't think is, may happen. Beyond the town center, what's going to happen with Superior? We're going to have a lot more traffic after, after the town center is developed.
Yeah, once the town center goes in, that weave becomes a nightmare, because you have those people trying to shoot over to get into the town center off that ramp.
We'll just have double, double diverging diamond.
Cross them back over again.
I'll have a huge mixed match.
That's the amusement park.
Well, no, but you bring up a good.
We can bring a roundabout there.
Except that, except that then. It's not weaving so much, because it's a controlled light now.
No, I mean, if we just did the double left and that weave is still not addressed, as soon as the town center comes in, you've got that many more people trying to race across through lanes of traffic. Yeah, so then, we don't have any accidents now. We'll have some at that point.
So is it two lanes that would be hitting Boulder off the diverging diamond? If you're coming from here and going to Boulder?
If you're going to Boulder here?
If you're going to, no, if you're coming from Superior going to Boulder, is it two lanes?
They just had shown one lane.
It's one in the drawing.
But it's continuous.
So it's only one continuous?
Yeah, you know.
That could be, that could be improved to two continuous, right? Because that, that's one place, it would seem like that would be a real potential bottleneck if town center gets built. Because you still have the same issue. You've got people trying to get across three lanes to get, you know, in the far-left lane of the diverging diamond in order to go to Boulder.
It's an option lane. If you have two lefts, you also have the straight ahead off the.
Yeah, the one left can be straight or left.
Yeah.
Yeah, left.
Straight or left, left.
Straight or.
Okay, well, I'm glad we got that cleared out. I guess, well, if I was to summarize where I think the commission is, that sort of majority seemed to favor the, the divergent diamond, but are concerned about the cost and schedule impacts associated with the improvement. And so there's, there's something simple and quick in terms of effectiveness related to the double lefts. I, I mean, I, I don't know if there's, I wouldn't necessarily say consensus, because I think I, I see the benefits of the divergent diamond, but I think the simplicity and ease of approval and cost in terms of the double lefts is the simpler solution for the short term. And I think that it will last long enough until the next improvement's needed. But, but, so, I don't know, if I, did I summarize that well enough?
That's correct. And the double left doesn't preclude the eventual divergent diamond.
It's true.
It's, it's not like you're building something and then you got to tear all a bunch of stuff out. You could modify it.
Yeah, I would say, given that, and if you were, if, if, if the decision was to move forward with the diverging diamond, we would definitely like to see that, those pedestrian movements, movement addressed by ideally widening bridge so that you could get that, that pedestrian walkway, you know, sidewalk down the middle. That would be, that would, no, I think that would make it a more ideal solution. So how's that for wishy-washy?
Well.
I mean, if you want, I don't know if you, if.
The idea is.
Do you guys want to give some more definitive?
Well, how long would a single left, I mean, usually the double left's not going to handle the town center. So the town center gets built, we have to have more than the double left, because you don't think the double left could handle the town center. Is that correct?
Well.
Did I hear that right?
I mean, that's my, my hunch, that when that's built out, that double left is really hard for us to handle.
Oh, Alex, you need to come to the mic. Sorry, I know you're standing there. You can sit, actually, you can sit there.
Yeah, I think that if the town center comes in, there's going to be real issues with the double left, probably right at the capacity of the double left. As Ian mentioned, the weave, it will be a real issue at that point.
Well, and the double left isn't going to solve the weave problems anyway.
No.
That'll remain basically the same.
Now, if you have, if you have ConocoPhillips property being built out in the town center, I think.
Yeah, that's on, that's on indefinite hold. So, so are, are we at capacity with the single left? I mean, I know people complain about it, but I drive it every single day and.
I mean, I know people complain about it, but I drive it every single day, and I think today was the first, and that was because it was snowing, people were just going slow. It was the first time I've ever waited for that left turn light twice.
Yeah, I've never waited.
I've never, ever waited for it.
I've never had an agent.
I know we hear complaints about it, but I've never seen it, I mean, on the weekends, I've said, well, I don't travel on the weekends, I know the weekends are probably a little bit worse, yeah. But are we at capacity with that single left? We're occasionally in the morning is our peak period on the double, on the northbound left. People go into Boulder, and so we occasionally were backing up into Marshall. Whether at capacity or not, I think it's not a, not a critical situation now.
Well, my point becomes, why do we, I mean, if we're going to, I mean, if we're going to spend money, what's the double left buying it? Are we fixing anything that people, that, are we really fixing a problem, a serious problem we have now? The serious problem that I understand we're trying to fix is the fact that we have to wait to make that left to go into Boulder, that they, you know, at least the town board and others who've talked about this, the intent of spending this money was to eliminate that left to improve the time that it takes next to get on the highway and go to Boulder. And are we going to gain that money?
Which is Alex's very first point, which is, he want, they're trying to find a solution that was equivalent to the...
Right, so now, why would we spend the money on a double left if we don't need to? I mean, why is that option in there, I guess, if we're going to have to replace it when the town center gets built anyway, and we don't have a, I mean, we have, we have an annoying problem right now, but not a serious problem.
We don't have a problem now, but if we, if the town center gets built, and we have a single left...
If we build the town center, we have a problem with a double left, too, in your opinion, probably. So, why spend the money to do the double left? Why not leave it alone, and then when we need to do the diverging diamond? I don't know why you would, because then, I mean, there's going to be some additional expense. I agree, you could do the double left and not lose a lot, but you are going to be spending the money to do the double left, and you're going to waste...
You're going to spend the money on the double left, and then you're going to add these pedestrian bridges on the sides.
Right, yeah.
And then that starts, you're putting the pedestrian down the middle if you switch over to a diverging diamond.
Right, exactly. Well, you'd have to expand the bridge to accommodate traffic, if you're going to do the double left with a plan to go to the diverging diamond. You wouldn't want to just, I mean, if truly we're saying, do the double left now with plans to go to the diverging diamond, it'd be silly to build pedestrian expansion, we should build vehicle expansions that we may use for pedestrians initially, and then when we go to the diverging diamond, it can support it.
Well, and in addition to which, it's going to take so long, as you said, to go through the process to get the final approval to do the double left.
Right, you know, and if one of the issues is, let's do a double left because we can get it and go on, we get in phase two, you know, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't solve a long-term problem, I'd rather go through the process of trying to get the funding...
Take the time and the energy and...
And do it right, and not rush it through and get the...
Well, the reality is that the Northeast Loop doesn't, doesn't solve the town center problem either.
Yes, it does, well...
It does?
Well, does it solve a problem?
It doesn't solve the weave problem, that kind of stuff?
The weave problem wasn't on the table in terms of the Northeast Loop.
No, but to Fred's point about, about trying to take into consideration the future development of the town center, and the connectivity to transit and all those types of things, we should be, if we're looking holistically at this, the Northeast Loop doesn't fix that either, right? Is that fair to say? If we were really, really, the best solution that fit, that does address this is the diverging diamond.
Right, I've looked at, I've looked at a number of permutations on solving that weave problem, and I haven't found a real good solution. This is the most promising one that I've seen. So, we haven't had that opportunity in the past. And if that's, to me, that's a perception that there's a real problem with that weave, the accidents are not showing that, but I think there's a real perception, and then the town center comes in, we're really going to aggravate that particular issue.
It almost seems like you need to bring the town center traffic out of McCaslin a ways, rather than here, just to give the room to, because you're going to end up with more, you know, a longer backup.
Well, there are accesses along McCaslin that's, you know, in the old plan, but I'm sure we'll continue that, and in the comp plan, we'll continue to either ratify those intersections or not, but they're, they're south, and there's our ways, once you're in the town center, to get to McCaslin, other than coming to Marshall Road, or the extension of Marshall Road, or the, or even, well, Colquhoun Drive isn't in that mix, but Marshall Road is. So, there's other intersections down there, it's not as though that's the only one.
Yeah, we'll be able to get into town center via Colquhoun.
True.
At some point in the future.
But, well, if you're exiting the town center, then it creates the problem, but...
Right, but if you're in the southern part of the town center, you're probably not going to go up to this intersection, you're going to get on somewhere, McCaslin...
Somewhere else.
Further to the south, on one of those other options. Yeah. At first, though, I mean, if the core is developed first, and around the extension of Marshall Road here, yeah, that's, there's going to be a lot of activity there, until the southern parts begin to develop, and people say, heck, I'm going to get on the CASL by getting that other intersection down there, it's much easier. Especially those who live there, if they're going to live there.
Okay, I guess we talked ourselves into it.
So, who can...
I guess it's...
Yeah, it would be nice to have a sort of a concise or...
A definitive statement of some sort.
A definitive statement or recommendation, because that's what you can do, even if you want to do a resolution.
You know, again, in terms of the timing, because I heard that, again, if this is a resolu, you know, a recommendation you pass on, and say, proceed post-haze to try to move this forward and get the DDI approved, I mean, it could be possible to get it in phase one. But, you know, who knows, CDO might latch on to it and fast-track it through the process.
Yes, they're excited to get one of these in, that's a benefit, I mean, they may try to move it, they might even...
And if RTD's excited about it, who knows? We don't know where they're coming from, so if we're hesitant...
Oh, yeah, you get a cool project.
If we're hesitant about it, then they, you know, again, a united front looks a whole lot better.
They might all be watching just...
Well, my concerns have kind of been alleviated through the second part of our discussion here, so I guess I'm more of working with the diverging diamond, and skipping the double left is potentially unnecessary.
We think the preferred alternative is the diverging diamond?
It might have been.
Tom, do you agree with that?
With the pedestrian, with the expansion of the bridge to support pedestrians down the center?
It's a full pedestrian accessibility.
I think that's our only...
At least six of the seven commissioners are...
I'm fine with that.
As a preferred, as at least as a preferred alternative.
We'll try it a couple of times, okay? I'm going.
As the preferred alternative, because, because it addresses not only the movements on, onto and off of 36, but also somewhat addresses the other concerns we have with McCaslin and Marshall, and the weave in there. And our concerns about the diverging diamond, though, in the design, is that the pedestrian, the pedestrian movements are addressed specifically, ideally, by allowing for the pedestrians to have only two, you know, two crossings, which would mean that you need to put them down the middle, and that may add cost.
So, what I have is support the diverging diamond alternative with the provision of providing good bike access in the middle of a wide bridge.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Do we need a vote?
Is that a, is that a resolution, or is that a...
Well, it's a recommendation. It's a recommendation.
I looked at the code, when we did this, I looked at the code, and it said for plan developments and stuff, that we would do a reservation. It doesn't say anything in there about major improvements. So, I was, when I talked to Matt, it was like, it would be just a recommendation.
Do we need to vote on the recommendation? Do you want to vote? Do you want to...
I think it was pretty clear. I, you know...
I can say that there's a consensus for it.
Right.
And that's the recommendation. The recommendation is to go forward with the diverging diamond with... Pedestrian center.
Pedestrian access to the center.
You can vote if you want, John.
No, I, I mean, I think we're...
Consensus.
Head nods are good.
Work.
I think we're fine.
We need to vote on it, per se.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay. I mean, if you guys feel there are any other comments related to the other alternatives that are relevant, that you think we should say, you know, we didn't think the double left, that the double left really addressed...
How about after extensive discussion, okay? Let it go to the pet.
Well, I was, I was simply, I mean, I don't know what you want to give the town board, but you guys can pull out points out of the discussion.
I think the discussion about the double left not really buying as much, it doesn't solve any problem, doesn't solve the serious problem, and any serious problems that we have today, and it also doesn't solve the issue when the town center gets built, so...
Yeah, it's really, it's just a band-aid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
An expensive band-aid on a minor cut, so...
Yeah, I'd say double left is not buying much over the long term for the town.
Right. And we also think that Lusfield's chicken for not...
That's why I was thinking it's...
Would you please bang your dabble? Can we go home?
Any other staff announcements?
Well, the only one I have is that we raised right now, that we had our first meeting, joint board meeting, planning commission meeting, last night, where we talked about the comp plan, people threw issues out on the table, we talked most about the map you might have gotten in your packet with the different areas on the map where there may be potential for change. We talked about those areas, and threw some more items on the table for the consultants to start dealing with. The next meeting, I believe, is with the community, and I think, I should have brought my schedule, but I believe it's May 2nd, but I'm not quite sure.
Second or third.
Second or third, something like that, so, and then there was other discussion about how to get the message out to folks in town, and so they're going to use the media outlets that you have, Facebooks and so on. So, they're going to, they will start tying into that, so you may be starting to see things pop up on the website. I think in the next meetings, they're going to bring some more, some enlarged maps, so that, you know, if we start talking about certain areas where we're not dealing with the scale, and we have to put, you know, use our magnifying glass to look at. I thought the meeting was productive. We started at 6:00 and ended at 8:15, something like that, so...
Can I?
Yeah.
If you look at that schedule, so you'll know when the next dates are for the joint PC and board meetings, and I put them on my calendar today, and I absolutely can't remember what they were, but I think it's, the next one is in May, and then June.
So, June, there's two, I know that.
There's the community meeting.
Oh, yeah, there's...
I think there's two in London.
Yeah, there's two in London, but, yeah, if you look at that, if you have your calendar, so you'll be aware.
Can we get those on the website soon? Because I, I mean, I checked the calendar today, I was trying to communicate this to people on the website, the dates aren't on the calendar yet, and they ought to be, I mean, we're all starting to talk to people about it, and I can't remember when the dates all are.
Okay, I will pass that on.
Yeah, they'll, and I, you know, I think they'll kick in, consultants will kick in pretty quick here on some of that. We've got the schedule, so, no one really objected to it. There's going to be conflicts all along, because it's summer for everybody as time goes on, but, you know, we've got a schedule, let's stick to it. Those who can make it, make it, and then try to catch up if you can, because you're out of town.
Is there any chance that they'll televise the community meetings?
I have no idea. As long as they're here, they might, but even last night's was not televised, and if they're held at the school, I don't think they have the capacity.
I thought the way that it was set up last night was, it gave plenty of room for other folks to be here, put this room to handle more than you think, even when we use the table as a, as a, of a way to communicate using the table arrangement, rather than, you know, this kind of... So, there was still quite a bit of room for others to join in, I thought. So, I think we'll, my thought is, we'll see how we go, but I think we continue to use this room, and maybe we can take advantage of that, put it on TV.
Okay. I can pass that on, too.
Yeah, yeah, as long as we use this room. The other thing is, the board will discuss the, an agreement for going forward with the, a rezoning plan for the town center on the north half, which is the north 80 acres, which is basically Menkew and Waylon properties. That discussion will be next Monday. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, may want to follow that. Because if they do, and they go forward, you will, down the line here, or July, probably somewhere, August, somewhere in there, be looking at it in a formal way. But there will be, as part of the schedule, I saw, there's also an informal part in there where we, as the planning commission, look at it, throw suggestions at it, give them feedback before they submit. So, there's a, so that's a good thing.
Okay, anyone else?
That's, that's coming up, and that means we're going to be for a business.
Okay. Thanks, because we are adjourned.